Let's call this meeting to order and stand for the pledge.
The pledge, which leads to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Brennan.
Honorable Mayor Ron Schaver.
Present.
Councilmember Brian Erdy Alice.
Here.
Doug Shasso.
Here.
John Caper.
Here.
Clint Anderson.
Here.
Lynn Deal.
Here.
Kevin Lindell.
Present.
Okay, first item on our agenda is public comment or part -- audience participation for items not on our agenda. Anybody wishes to address council? Are we on Zoom, John, or?
I believe we are. I'm not connected to it right now.
Okay. Well, we will move forward. Next is a presen -- presentation on appointments of two members to fill vacancies on the Planning Comis -- Commission. Mr. Nation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. A little bookkeeping here. Back in March, we knew we were going to have two vacancies occurring on the first of April on the Planning Commission. We had one of our current commissioners that had filled a vacancy earlier in the term that indicated that they would like to go ahead and continue to be on the com -- or on the commission. That's Dolores Del Campo. And so you have her application in front of you. And we still had another vacancy. And so we received a couple of applications and the Planning Commission moved forward the recommendation of Jordan Riley to fill that vacancy. And so you have those two in front of you tonight to fill those two expired terms. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Nation? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion. I'd move that we accept the applications of Dolores Del Campo and Jordan Riley for the Planning Commission. I have a motion by Kevin Lindell, a second by Brian Erdy Alice. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Will you inform them? Okay. Next is a presentation by the Veterans Suicide Awareness and Prevention Program. I believe you're Ms. Christensen.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I just want to thank you for letting us come and present tonight, an organization that we've started. 911, what is your emergency? My brother, mother, grandfather, sister, neighbor, best friend, fill in the blank, just took their own life. Can you imagine dispatchers around the United States get 15 to 20 calls every day from friends and families of veterans who died by suicide, along with all the calls from non-veteran friends and families who died by suicide? The most current 2018 statistics are 17.5 veterans every day take their life. We would like to help change that. So I am Melody Christensen. I am a veteran, Navy veteran. My husband took his life in 2006. So this is very, very dear to my heart. So I thank you tonight for listening. So in May of 2019, a coalition called Together with Veterans came to Brush and it there are community-based suicide prevention program partnering with and for rural veterans. Brought together a group of veterans and community members from the Brush area for an information building meeting. And TWV, which is Together with Veterans, is funded by the VA Office of Rural Health. So TWV is carried out by a collaboration between the Rocky Mountain Mental Illness Research, Education, and Clinical Center, which is MIRIC, for suicide prevention, the Western Interstate Commission for Higher Education Behavioral Health Program, which is WICHIE, local veterans, and other community stakeholders. Through these partnerships, TWV supports the dissemination of best practices in public health suicide prevention to rural communities consistent with the goals of the national strategies for preventing veteran suicide. So the guiding principles TWV uses are: It's veteran-driven, so veterans provide permission and work together to provide the leadership to guide this process. It's collaborative, so community partners play a key role. And then if they are informed and educated about suicide prevention and veteran military culture, which I don't know if any of you are veterans, but we kind of have an old language of our own. Are any of you veterans, by the way? None? Okay. So you have no idea what I'm going to say next. So they're better equipped to address the needs of veterans if you understand us. Collaboration and education will strengthen the suicide prevention for veterans, their families, and their friends. It's evidence-informed, so TWV strategies are drawn from well-researched models that they know already reduce suicide effectively. And it's community-centered, which means TWV partners a unique suicide prevention action plan based on community strengths and addressing community needs. So so far, we have had two community assessments that we have done. We did one when we very first started. We brought together some community members in the area just to see, you know, what do you know about veteran suicide? What do you know about veteran resources? And we were surprised, I guess we were surprised, but we weren't surprised, that people had no clue. They didn't know about the veteran suicide rate. They don't know anything about veteran resources. So we were out to change that. We did another one just recently, and we haven't got the results back from that yet, but I was in on that assessment. And it scares me a little bit to think that a lot of them still don't know about veterans' resources or what we're doing. So that's why we're coming to you guys. So... So TWV is currently in 15 communities throughout the United States. There's two in Colorado, us and San Luis Valley. And then they also go as far as Guam and Juneau, Alaska. So as you can see, the need is growing. When we first joined in 2019, there were three. So you can see how much it's increased. So at this May meeting, Stacy Cypress, I don't know if any of you know her or not, but at the time, she was the Regional Health Connector Veteran Specialist of the Centennial Area Health Education Center, which is CAHEC, which is the way military and government always uses a lot of acronyms because their names are so long. She was a veteran herself. She kicked off the meeting by sharing her own story and then encouraging attendees to introduce themselves and their reasons for being there. There were approximately 25 people attended the meeting, including Brush Mayor Rick Vane, Moore County Sheriff Dave Martin, and also former sheriff Jim Crone. So the attendees heard about the national reach of Together with Veterans, and then they collaborated on what we call SWOT. That kind of SWAT. But strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And that was the assessment that we went by and that we just did another one of. So the action plans for VSAP are to provide suicide prevention training. One of them is called Save Signs Ask Validate and Encourage to Anyone and Everyone Who Wants It. Enhancing primary care suicide training, and that would be for hospitals, clinics, that kind of thing. Promoting connectedness and help-seeking. We're working on a one-page resource directory that we can give to veterans and their families. I know going through the VA, a lot of times you make 47 calls before you get to who you really need to talk to. We're hoping this one-page resource document will cut down on a lot of that, especially if you're PTSD and you're suicidal. The last thing you need to do is be making 47 phone calls. Improving communication across veterans-serving programs, such as the Veterans Service Officer, Monty Kinder, that has just been hired here, and then also through the VA. Promoting lethal means safety. So gun safety, types of guns and gun locks, and how to use them safely. We also give out gun locks. Didn't even think to bring any tonight. Does your police off -- department do that, by chance?
We have in the past. I believe you'll have.
Okay, great. I know Brush does, so. Okay, but if you ever need a gun lock, don't be afraid to hesitate to ask. We also do free online courses. There's one called CALM, which is Counseling on Access to Lethal Means. We enhance behavioral health and suicide prevention. So we work with Centennial Mental Health here in Fort Morgan, and we also work with the Center for Healing Trauma and Attachment in Brush. And I believe there's another mental health one that's going to be starting up in Brush here within the next few months, so. So then after that kickoff meeting, we meet the first Monday of every month, 6 o'clock at the Brush VFW. Anyone is invited to come and attend. We're also been doing them by Zoom, Zoom and in-person. So if you are interested, let me know. I can send you the link for that. So so far, we have developed a steering committee. We've decided on our name, which is Northeastern Colorado Veterans Suicide Awareness and Prevention, which is VSAP. We participated in events by having booths, provided our first several awareness and prevention trainings, ordered shirts and banners for visibility. We developed a website and a Facebook page. We participate in the monthly "Any is Too Many" on the corner of Edison and Colorado in Brush. How many of you have heard of that? What we do in Brush? I would love to bring -- thank you. I would love to bring that to Fort Morgan also. We stand on the corner for one hour on the 22nd of every month, because when we originally started this, it was 22 veterans a day that committed suicide. So it was 22 is too many. And the VA came back and said, "You're giving out false information." It was 2018, it was only 17.5. Like I said, I'm sorry. After COVID, I'm pretty sure it's more than 22. So we just changed it to "any is too many." That way, the number doesn't matter. It's just "any is too many." If you ever want to join us, 22nd of the month, from 12 to 1, we just stand on the corner and we just, it's not a fundraiser or anything, it's just awareness. And everybody in Brush knows who we are, so. We provided a free Valentine's Dinner for veterans and their families to help with isolation during COVID-19. I don't know how many of you remember Valentine's Day, but when I left the VFW that night, it was minus 14 degrees, and we had probably 30 to 35 veterans that came out for our veterans' dinner. So that was pretty cool. We hosted a gun safety class at the Brush VFW, and there was about a dozen people or so that attended that. Also, every Tuesday morning at 8 o'clock at Drover's, we have veterans that come, and the coffee is free and breakfast is on your own. Occasionally, an organization will buy us breakfast, but they just come and they just talk. And a lot of times, that's all a veteran needs. They just want to talk to somebody about what's going on in their lives. So you're welcome to that if you ever want to attend. And we have over 60 individuals right now on our roster. So it's a good group, and we're growing as we speak. So in process, what we're doing, developing a one-page resource guide for the veterans and their families, giving presentations such as this. We've been able to go to the Brush and Fort Morgan Rotary and Lions Clubs. We've done radio shows, and this is now our Fort Morgan and Brush city councils. We're setting up suicide prevention trainings for veterans, community, and organizations. We're processing our 501(c)(3) nonprofit paperwork, so we're trying to become nonprofit. We're also working on trying to get the question, "Did you serve in the military?" on medical admission forms. We feel that if a veteran or if a doctor knows upfront that you're a veteran, or maybe you served in Vietnam, maybe there's some Agent Orange issues, or maybe you have PTSD, instead of waiting till the third or fourth appointment and finding out, "Oh, you're a veteran? Well, maybe we should look at this differently." Just ask the question upfront. It's one simple question. We're also working on peer support groups, starting a peer-to-peer support group, and also a suicide loss survivor group, which would be considered me. We're not counselors, but our goal is to provide training and resources, starting with a three-county area, Morgan, Logan, and Yuma Counties, and then hopefully reaching out to all of northeastern Colorado soon. These are our current and future, hopefully, local partners. Not going to read them all to you, but you can kind of see VSOs, clergy, VFW, the military organizations, we're open to get with the city and county governments, the behavioral health and the primary care providers. We did, Don Harris is in our group, and he mentioned to us a meeting or so ago that in the last, I believe he said year, 60% of his funerals have been suicides, which is so scary. And I know we've had at least eight young adults that have taken their own lives in the last year. So it's real, it's out there. We're just trying to help make it better. So in closing, I'd just like to say, I hope you will never have to make the call. 911, what is your emergency? Have any questions for me at all?
So is, does your group take over or replace Mission 22, or are?
No, I mean...
But that's still going.
As far as I know, that's still going. A test man is kind of in charge of that one. She's in our group. Like I said, we try to partner with as many of those kind of organizations that we can, but no, she's separate from us, yeah. So. I did leave my business card and also a Veterans Crisis Line card with each of you. Maybe you can hand out free gun locks.
We'll talk to them when we're done here briefly.
Sorry about that. I should have brought them with me, so I do apologize. But I have a...
The first Monday of the month at the Brush VFW?
Yeah, 6 o'clock. And dinner is provided. You just need to RSVP. We try to do some nice dinners. We've even been using Fort Morgan here, so we're doing a catering service this week. We've used Zazie's Cafe, and we've used the other one. I can't think of her name right now. Jordan.
Bon appetit.
Bon appetit. There we go. I knew that was it. Did you have something, Lynn?
Yes. Kelly Paris has started that new group, Break the Silence. I think hers covers more issues, but I know suicide, also suicide, so will you be working with that?
Yeah, we're actually working really closely with Kelly right now. She's not as much with the veterans as just suicide in general. But this is actually her fifth year that she's been doing Break the Silence. And yeah, we've been working very closely with her. That's where we're trying to figure out the peer support groups. She is trying to open a free resource center for anybody who needs mental health assistance. So she's working hard at that. She's got a building going, and she's raised quite a bit of money already, so. But we do work closely with Kelly, yes.
How's your reception with primary care providers and everything?
That one's been a tough one to get into. They started coming to our meetings at the beginning, and now they've kind of laid off. So that's where I'm going to hit next, is starting to get into the hospitals and the clinics and see how we can work together. So I think they're just so busy with COVID, it's just been crazy.
Anytime, you know, where you did have some initial evaluation, but typically trying to, your time is so busy with everything you're doing and stuff like that, that it makes it difficult. That's what I was wondering.
Right.
How your reception was and everything like that, so.
We'll get to them. We'll partner with them a little better as we go, so. But our goal was to come to you guys. You know, we don't expect everybody to, "Hey, come to our meeting, come to our meeting." You know what? I'm going to go to their meeting.
There you go.
Anything else?
Well, useful information, and I appreciate your attention to the public attention.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate your time. All right. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to shuffle this up just a little bit. We have a new person sitting up at the desk here next to Mr. Wilson, and they've hired a new law clerk. So I will let Mr. Wilson introduce their newest local hire.
I'm pleased and honored to introduce Matty Linton, born and raised in Fort Morgan as Wilson Williams LLP's first employee, our law clerk. And we're just thrilled and delighted to have Matty onboard. She's a second-year law student, University of Wyoming Law School. And Nina and I are just thrilled as can be. And this will give Nina in particular some much-needed assistance. So thank you for the opportunity to introduce Matty.
Hello, everybody. I'm excited to learn from the city council and from Nina and Jeff this summer. Thank you for having me on.
Welcome aboard. Welcome to their group.
I just asked Steve, I said, "Is she any relation to Doug?"
Well, she very well could be. Actually, I think she would be more related to Leslie.
Yeah, I don't know if I want to claim him yet.
Oh, yes, you should claim him.
But yes, she is a local gal, and... She's getting her law degree at University of Wyoming, so.
Great.
And an MPA, as I understand, so doing double majors there, so. Masters in Public Administration.
Nina described her as a young version of herself, which just sent a cold chill up my spine.
You are outnumbered, Mr. Wilson.
And my condolences perhaps would be worse.
Well, you'll learn a lot from them, for sure. Next is a presentation on bid process for the Historic City Hall Window Project. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a project that was aimed at solving a longstanding problem with this building. It's been air infiltration and dirt and dust and everything coming through the windows for I don't know how long. They've tried storm windows. In fact, I think some windows have three sets of storm windows on them. There's one in my office that has one outside, one inside, and one kind of in the middle. So we decided, we initially were going to try to solve the problem with storm windows, but we fortunately consulted with Mike Kirkendall and Mike Hojer, and they kind of pointed out the structure of these wooden window frames was more of the problem than the glass or the seal itself. And so we took it a little further and got some professional guidance. We called on a couple of companies that offered to come out and give us some, you know, kind of inspect the building, look at the windows, look at the frames, tell us what the, you know, what the problem was and whether storm windows would fix it. And based on what we found out from those companies, we decided to sort of make it a different approach to the RFP. Instead of dictating storm windows, "This is what we want, tell us your price," we kind of flipped it around and said, "This is our problem. How would you solve it?" And these guys were the professional experts, and so we wanted them to tell us what, you know, what would take care of this problem, because storm windows had not done it in the past. We had a pre-bid meeting in March. Two companies attended, and neither one of them were the ones that came and consulted with us earlier. Neither one of them bid on the, and one of the two had very little to say. The other one was with a company based out of Kansas City that specializes in historic building and this kind of restorative work, and they said they probably would bid on the project. And he had described the process that they would use, and it's kind of complicated, but they called it panning, and it basically creating a custom aluminum frame and then fitting a new window into that. Unfortunately, the cost of that, their bid was $325,000. We had budgeted $50,000. And so that's, you know, that bid is more than six times the amount we budgeted, more than $7,000 a window. And so staff just doesn't feel comfortable recommending going down that road any further. So we recommend declining that bid and reconsidering the practicality of undertaking this project.
Well, I agree. I studied that, and that's way, way too much money. I visited with Steve today and with Ron, and my suggestion would be to, for me, to take up all the information that we have and all the pictures and go to the Historical Society, because I know that through the last 25 years, there's been thousands of windows, and old windows with this type of framing, that have, there's ways to approach it. So what I'd like to do is go to them and show them the problem and the bid and the fix, and see if they could recommend another avenue or another professional that works on windows, and then the possibility also of looking for grants, because I know that the windows are significant historical part of the building. And when we originally did the building, actually Sandy was, wrote the grants for that. So I would like to check in on the grant availability. And I think it's highly probable, because windows are an important part. And also, we could also check with DOLA and conservation. There's conservation grants to, for saving energy. There's different things. And so I would like to go back with them, because the building is listed on the National Register, and see what else is out there. Because there's a way, I think there's a way to do it, and certainly not at $300,000. I think it's worth pursuing, and I still have connections with a lot of the people that do this kind of work. So I asked Steve and Ron, so asking your approval and permission to see what I can find out.
Well, I think if you have the contacts and everything, that makes really good sense. You know, I've always thought that, you know, part of the bidding process is left up to chance, so as far as if you have the right people checking the website at the right time and everything. So if you have contacts and everything and know people where this is in their roundhouse as far as area of expertise, I think that makes real good sense, if you're willing to do that, which obviously you are where you're volunteering, so I think it makes really good sense.
Down my alley of preservation. I would be, look forward to seeing what else we could find, because I think there's got to be a solution to it, and if we can find some grant money to do it. And so I'll just go investigate and bring all the information back with Steve and all of you.
If you can get that decimal point moved a little bit over there.
Absolutely. I think that's outrageous, but, you know, and...
And that was kind of shocking.
Oh, yeah.
Steve asked me, and my guess was $100,000.
Yeah, there's no way.
By $2,000 under plans.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I mean, we built the band shelf for $300,000.
Yeah.
Which I thought was ridiculous, anyway. But anyway, I think there's, there's some other options, and it's certainly worth looking into.
Well, do your magic.
Okay, I'll try it.
Next item is a presentation on the first reading of an ordinance 1249, Amending Chapter 21, Article 14 of the City Municipal Code Concerning Flood Plane Hazard Mitigation. A request to schedule a public hearing on the ordinance for May 4th, 2021. Mr. Nation?
Good evening again. This is another more or less bookkeeping type of exercise that we have. The reason that I didn't even include the changes to the municipal code is, it comes down to it, what they were requesting of us didn't require a lot of changes within our code. Our floodplain regulations are in pretty good shape. It's just that FEMA has now gone through all the studies and have reevaluated the floodplain maps for our general area. And so when that happens, we have to change all of the references to the old maps, to the references to the new maps, and all of the dates that all this became active. And so that's what we're basically doing, is just recognizing that the FEMA people have basically produced these new maps, and they have some change. They've tried to put as much data research into them and modify the floodplain levels as best they can and provide, you know, engineers and everything the tool they need to establish that floodplain at a more precise level. The city of Fort Morgan does not have a lot of impacts in the floodplain, you know. Our touching of the floodplain is very minimal compared to like a community like Brush, where, you know, the better half of Brush sits within a designated flood zone. And so very minor to the type of people that are this. But it's, it all touches, it all goes back to people that have to get flood insurance, and people that have flood insurance are very familiar with the National Flood Insurance Program. Been around for a little over 50 years now, and this is what allows people to go out and get flood insurance on their properties if they do sit into a flood zone. So we have to do this in order to make us compliant with the federal programs, and that way people that are required to have flood insurance can get flood insurance. If we don't do this update, it takes us out of the federal program and causes problems for people that are in the flood zone. So this is a two-step process, so we need to have a public hearing at the next meeting, and then it'll... and then it'll go into effect after that. And so, uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions on this.
The housekeeping.
Yep. I've got all of the updated maps and everything in my office that they produced and sent to us electronically, so.
Any questions for Brent? Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution.
I'd offer a resolution that we approved first reading ordinance 1249, amending Chapter 21, Article 14 of the City of Fort Morgan Municipal Code and schedule a hearing for public hearing on 5/4.
Second? Have a resolution by Kevin Lindell, a second by Doug Sashow. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you for that.
Next is a presentation on first reading of an ordinance 1250, amending Chapter 2, Article 2 of the Fort Morgan Municipal Code, clarifying compensation of mayor, council members, and request to schedule a public hearing on the ordinance for May 4th. Mr. Glameyer?
All right, thank you, Your Honor. Um, what you have before you tonight again is a bit of a housekeeping matter. Um, in the code, we codified, uh, compensation to the mayor and to the council, what you get paid each month. Um, but as a matter of practice, for quite some time, we have offered, uh, council members and the mayor the opportunity, if they elected, to, uh, receive health insurance benefits as the other city employees might receive from time to time. Um, we couldn't find any place where that was really codified. Um, and so we thought this was a good opportunity to do that and also to clarify what that meant. Um, and specifically that it, um, allows you to receive the same type of health benefit that a city employee might receive incident to their employment. Um, what that means essentially is that, you know, we have two or three plans that you can elect to sign up for, if you will. What it does not mean is that the city will pay, if you will, private health premiums or Medicare premiums or these types of things, because those are something that are not incidental to employment to other city employees. So this takes care of that. It kind of puts that in the code and, uh, clarifies exactly what we're trying to do there, so. Um, Jeff wrote this language, so if you have questions, hopefully he can help there, but, uh, happy to answer any questions if you have those of me as well.
What other legal issues?
So just meant as Steve said, to memorialize the existing options for council. State law prohibits any increase in benefits during your term of office. So this just is a more clear way of stating what everybody already is entitled to.
There's no questions, I would entertain a resolution.
I'd offer a resolution to approve first reading ordinance 1250, amending Chapter 2, Article 2 of the Fort Morgan Municipal Code and schedule public hearing for May 4th.
Have a resolution by Kevin Lindell, a second by Brian Erdy Alice. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next is council acting as the electric department and system enterprise of the City of Fort Morgan. Mr. Nation?
Want to thank Mr. Brennan for allowing me to get my steps for the day.
We'll pull a chair up up here for you.
Yeah. Um, this is the last thing I got for you tonight. Um, this is, um, we, um, make several, different type of adjustments to our, our rates. Um, with gas and electric, we have the ability, if it's a pass-through type of cost, so something that's coming to us directly from our provider, um, we can just come to the council and request a resolution to have that rate adjusted and then pass that on to, um, our customers. Um, but if we're making any type of rate adjustment that has its basis in how many employees we have, how many trucks we have, things like that, then we have to have a full-fledged rate hearing. Um, this is a, um, item that is just a pass-through cost and then some language update to the electric tariff. Um, we provided you with the redline copy of the language that was adjusted and then you'll see that it's, it has the adjusted credit number that is found. Um, as our world of distributed generation continues to grow around us, that's, you know, people putting solar panels up and wind turbines and all that stuff, we've, you know, we've started to settle on certain languages that are used. And when we're in that arena, avoided cost is the big thing that we start to discuss with customers. You know, we don't mind people putting solar on their roofs and bringing that on to the system, but there's a certain cost that we incur just for having them on the system when they're not providing, you know, when we're not providing them with power. And that's an avoided cost that that customer has to, you know, step up and know that's going to come off of their credit. And so this is just, um, simply a cost that we now get every year from MEAN. Um, our consultant looked through everything and, and, um, determined that we were good to go and just bring this forward as a resolution. So this will just go into, we are, we only have a handful of solar customers in town that use net metering. And so this is that charge and that language cleanup for that portion of the electric tariff. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Nation? So this basically is just net metering?
Yeah, it's just a net metering adjustment and, and MEAN will probably pass one of these along to us every year now. They do the analysis every year and it's because all the MEAN communities have solar now attached to them. And so it's just a necessity of doing business.
Brent, is there, is there, can you tell if that really does save a person on their electric bill?
Well, you know, it shows up as a credit. And so if, you know, those people that look at their bill every month, I don't go and look at all the solar customers, but, but they do generate. No, we do have some of them that generate excess of, of what they need for their, their house demands, depending on, you know, how sunny it was during the month and everything. So it does them some good. I, you know, everybody's solar system is different. And so, you know, does, what is the return on investment is the question you ask. And, and the tax credits are different for everybody. The company that did the installation is different. And so I don't know from a personal standpoint, when they come in and tell us they're doing one of these systems, how quickly it, you know, pencils out for them. But obviously they decided it was worth trying. And so we, that's why we don't discourage this by any means and let people do it. So it, it does, the simple fact of the matter though is since City of Fort Morgan has such low electric rates, it takes a lot longer to see a return on investment. And that's why if you go to a community, like, um, if I remember right, Glenwood Springs, I think they have, you know, over a hundred solar installations in their community up in the mountains. And so where we have, I think we're up to six now, so.
No windmill people though?
No, we only have, there's, there is one community, um, that if you go out to the City of Ray, they have that big wind turbine that sits up on the hill and that was a joint project with like the hospital and the school district. That is, they are a MEAN community and so that shows up as distributed generation on Ray's side of the equation, so.
There, I think it's on, on 52 going to Fort Lupton. I think that's where it's at, but you see big fields of solar.
Yeah, I think those are all public service or XL Energy Fields.
So they're, they're adding that to their grid?
Yep.
Work great on sunny days. Okay, any other questions for Brent? There are none, I would entertain a resolution.
I'd offer a resolution, accepting the, approving the resolution, adjusting the city's electric rate for net metering.
Have a resolution by Kevin Lindell, a second by Clint Anderson. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you once again.
Next is a presentation on a resolution to approve the city fraud prevention and detection policy. Ms. Kenny?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I guess I would say this isn't a housekeeping measure, but, you know, I wish it was. Um, anyway, uh, we had a FEMA site review in September of 2018 and, um, they asked that we, uh, create three policies. One was the grant policy, which you guys have already seen and approved. This one is the fraud and abuse policy. And the procurement policy is still kind of waiting, because we're making some changes in procurement. Um, the FEMA people provided us a sample from Colorado Springs, so we used that as a guide, um, because we knew that that would be acceptable to them. Um, Nina went through, uh, the, the policy and made some changes and made it more unique to us. And, um, so the policy that, that you have, uh, before you is the result of, of her work and, and, uh, the Colorado Springs policy. Anyway, it, it's just explaining what is fraud and abuse and how someone who works for the city might go about reporting it or someone outside the city might go about reporting it. And, um, it just, uh, you know, has, has a method that you're supposed to use. It also, um, includes the whistleblower provision, which says that, you know, someone can, um, want something like that investigated and go ahead and have that done and not have to face any kind of retaliation in case if maybe they were found to be wrong or, or, um, maybe they were found to be right, but there wouldn't be any retaliation against them. That was one of the things that they wanted included in the policy was the whistleblower status, so. Um, what I need tonight is, is a resolution approving the policy, because for me to send it back to, um, FEMA, they will need to know that the, that the council approved it. So does anybody have any questions about it?
I have not read this. Nina drafted this for, uh, Jeanie. I'd be happy to try and answer her question, but no, I haven't.
Any other questions for Jeanie? Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution.
I'd offer a resolution approving and adopting the City of Fort Morgan fraud prevention and detection policy.
Have a resolution by Kevin Lindell, a second by Clint Anderson. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thanks, Jeanie. Next is a presentation outlining a policy for dedication plaques on the new city facilities. Steve Glameyer?
Okay, yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Uh, again, tonight what we're looking for is a resolution on a new policy, um, that is, you know, typical in a lot of cities. So when you build projects, a lot of times you might dedicate that facility, building bridge, whatever it might be, with some type of a plaque recognizing, you know, the elected officials that were seated at the time, uh, appointed officials, as might be appropriate, um, contractors, design engineers, architects, these types of things. Uh, you've seen these, there's that big one at the police department. There's, we did one at the Gene Doty Senior Center. There's one at the water treatment plant. There's probably one at the wastewater treatment plant. I didn't see it, but I'll bet there is. No, okay. So, but this came up, uh, as we were working on the Field House project in particular. Um, and, and the question came, well, who do we put on that project? As you know, we've been working on the Field House, well, even before I got here in, in concept, but certainly through, uh, design and construction over multiple, uh, council members and a couple of city managers. So it was a, you know, question of, of, well, who, who do we put on this thing? Um, so it's, uh, I did a little bit of research. I worked with, uh, with Jeff and Nina on this as well. Um, what I find in most all communities that I, that I reached out to is that you would create a policy that would, uh, have those elected officials that were seated at the time that you ordered the plaque or had the dedication. It is conceivable that you could lose an elected official between the time you order it and actually dedicate the facility. I've seen that happen. Um, and then any appointed officials, as might be appropriate, at the time of the time you order the plaque and/or it's dedicated. Um, so that's what you have before you tonight. That's the way the language is articulated here in the, in the, uh, policy. And we're looking for a resolution to adopt that tonight. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about that.
Anybody have any questions regarding this? I'd just like to say I think it's, kind of spells it all out, so there's many guesswork down the road.
Yeah, definitely not trying to slight anybody. It's just where do you begin and where do you stop? You know, in particular, I had a project in Delta that spanned multiple years and we had three city managers and I don't know how many council members over that period of time. And, uh, where, where would you begin and where would you stop, right, so?
Well, this spells it out and I think there's a lot of little odds and ends like this, that if we haven't spelled out it removes guesswork and what ifs, so. Any other questions? Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution.
I'd offer a resolution establishing and outlining the policy for dedication for plaques or signs on city completed facilities or projects.
Second? Have a resolution by Kevin Lindell, a second by Doug Sashow. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
All right, thank you all.
Next is the 2022 budget calendar. Glameyer?
Okay, I have, uh, included in your packet a, a memo outlining, um, work that we completed at the budget retreat, uh, on March 20th and also a copy of the updated five-year capital improvement plan based on that work and, uh, conversation that we had at that meeting. I tried to hit the high points here. Um, this is to make sure that we've got the right direction as we, uh, start to prepare the budget for 2022. Um, and in case I missed anything, this is the opportunity to, uh, make sure that gets on the list. I, I left out the routine business and things that may have been in the surveys or things that we discussed. Um, but, uh, rest assured that certainly if it's, you know, weeds in the alleys or, um, you know, junk throughout the city or things of this nature, you know, that's on our list every year and it's, and it's certainly something that we budget to take care of annually. But these are kind of the, the highlights and the high points. Um, and did include things from the police department and fire department. So, um, you know, if you have questions about those, uh, well, for sure for the police department, um, I think Lauren can help with those. But hopefully we captured all of those items, but, uh, happy to take any further direction. But this'll, this'll set the stage, if you will, as we prepare the budget.
I just noticed that you had two line items, one for repavement in the cemetery and one for repavement down by Riverside, but there wasn't any money as far as a date or something like that. And I figured, I didn't know if it was going into strictly for streets or whatever, but it kind of, you've got it listed as a line item, but there's no money budgeted any year.
Right, so those are probably things that we have pushed out into, uh, into a further year. But I'll take a look at that, Kevin, and make sure that, uh, if we needed to include some dollars, um, that we get those included in there. Cemetery road rebuilds, I see that one.
Yeah, and then I think further down in the parts, you had the Riverside, uh, repayment or something like, or rebuild like.
Right, roads in Riverside Park.
Didn't have anything.
Yep.
Neither of those had any, uh, sums attached to them.
Perfect, good catch. We'll, uh, we'll take a look at those. We are still developing the 2020, uh, 6, and so it may be one of those things that got moved out into 2026. But let me at least take a look at the spreadsheet.
And then one other thing, uh, is the stuff from the retreats and everything like that, you put in, um, oh, delineate bike lanes on selected streets, but I didn't see anywhere in the budget where that was there. So I didn't know if it was anything that really needed a line item or if it was pushed off further or what happened with that.
Most likely what we would use is money that's in, uh, the capital fund for street improvements. Um, not necessarily strictly for street funds, because that's quite, uh, constrained in what you can do. But certainly the regular capital improvement money for street improvements could be used for pavement markings.
And that's the 900,000 we do every year?
Yep.
Okay.
Other questions I can? Other questions I can?
I have one question. It was after our retreat, because I brought it up, about focused on sums strictly for streets, money on alleys.
Right.
And you said we'd have to take money out of the pavement project for alleys.
Right.
But what I was thinking is, is there a way to add more? This is, might sound like a crazy question, but it is. If we bought more gravel and as you're, if they grade the alleys, they grade mine all the time, dump some gravel down in the grave. Does that, would that take away so much from the actual paving of the streets that needed so much?
Yeah, I mean, if we have to buy material, we certainly have to get that from somewhere. And strictly for streets money is allowed to be used for alley improvements.
Yes.
And so we would take strictly for streets money if we needed to buy gravel and we would buy it with strictly for streets money, which would, you know, in theory, take away from paving more streets. But we also have a fair amount of what I would call ground up asphalt. We call it rotamill material, if you will. And so I think that's possible that we could use some of that material to use in the alleys as gravel, if you will. So I think, you know, it's, I don't know that we would necessarily have to buy material. But one of the things we did talk about was maybe getting some contractor help to install that material or help belay that material in and get it compacted and so on and so forth. Because we're limited in scope with our staff to do that. So we would use strictly for streets dollars like we would any other project and just bid that out and get a contractor in to help improve the alleys that way.
When they dug up, well, I had to dig up my sewer and that involved, you know, the main and the alley. And then the city also came and did some, they replaced that down in that hole because they put concrete backways and they went down there. So they dug all that up again. So therefore, because I had a great alley, I don't have flooding or anything. But it, then it was mud and it settled, so they would add more gravel to it. And it took several, go like maybe one year and then the next. But the stuff they put on it had, it was, and that really solved the problem. So I didn't know if you do that regularly. And there's other money for streets besides the strictly for streets, isn't there?
There is. There's the $900,000, like we just talked about. Yeah, there's that money.
But if that was incorporated, then eventually the alleys would be looking pretty good, I think.
Yeah, that's it. And Brent and I have talked about this. And like I say, recognizing that that was a priority from the retreat, we're going to look at how we can invest more money into the alleys and get them cleaned up.
Just the worst ones.
Yeah, and that's the tough thing. Worse is a matter of opinion. If you live there and it's got potholes in it, it's bad for you. If you never drive down your alley, your alley's never bad for me, right? So that's the tough part about alleys is.
Well, that would be up to you guys.
Yeah, we would do the best we can to try to identify where to go and which ones to do. That's the tough part with alleys.
Last fall in October, when I drove down some of the alleys, I could hardly get through it from brush and trees.
Sure.
And it was kind of just like that.
And hopefully cleanup will take care of that issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that is a priority. We did put it on the list and so we'll certainly look to see how we can help with that.
I hope that I wasn't taking too much of the streets to prioritize over the alley.
Well, to be fair, I mean, when we took this to the vote of the people, alleys was on the ballot question. So I think there was some desire to do things with the alley. So now's the time.
Okay. Thank you.
I think using the crushed asphalt in that is probably the best way to get it.
Do you? Do you use fly ash?
Typically not in the alleys. It's just, I've not seen them do that. I've just seen them grade and compact that.
Because I used, I had a big parking lot that I had to amend and we used, they used fly ash.
The more improper issue you make in alley, the more difficult it's going to be to deal with because then the water's going to go right into the backyards and we certainly don't want to do that.
So I didn't know. That was a question I had. I was going to ask. Not the best material.
Yeah, not really for that application.
Okay.
Are there other questions or other items that may be recognized?
Doug wants to put his name on this for his alley.
Okay. Yeah, well, that's a matter of opinion.
I don't drive his alley, so it's not important.
Yeah, no, that's good direction. I appreciate that. We'll get to work on the budget then. And speaking of the budget, I mean, we'll be starting presentations soon on that. So this gives us the final piece of direction that we need to get started. So thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight's consent agenda includes Item A, approval of the disbursements and payroll for March, and Item B, approval of the minutes of the April 6, 2021 City Council Regular Meeting. All matters on the consent agenda are considered routine business by the council and will be enacted with a single motion and a single vote by roll call. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is deemed necessary, that item should be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
Everybody reviewed the consent agenda? If so, I would entertain a resolution.
I'd offer a resolution approving the consent agenda.
Have a resolution by Kevin Lindell, a second by Clint Anderson, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Reports by officials and staff.
Yeah, I've got a few things, if I could, Your Honor. First of all, I would like to welcome Sandy Engel to the team. I reported, yeah. I reported at the last meeting that we had made the offer and that Sandy would be joining our team, and she has done that. She's on day two. And so I don't think we've overwhelmed her too much as yet. But certainly John and I have had the opportunity to meet with her and basically download a lot of information and work. And she's hit the ground running and we're really excited to have Sandy on board. Sandy, I don't know if you want to say anything. You're welcome to.
Let everybody see you. You're new to the community, so you know.
Right. You may not have ever met Sandy before.
Okay.
Mayor, council, and city staff, I just want to say thank you for giving me this opportunity to come and serve the City of Fort Morgan. It is a community that has been very near and dear to my heart. Today I was able to participate actually in a tour of the Police and Fire Departments. And I started thinking about while there has been so much that has changed from 20 years ago when I was first here, there's a lot still that are the same. And I think some of those things that are the same, the people, the partnership, and that sense of pride and progress that we all have for this community is still there. And so I'm excited, again, to be able to contribute to that. So again, thank you for this opportunity and I look forward to working with all of you.
Sandy, I think, did you, you were involved when they rebranded us, People Partnership and Progress? Because you were named the Progress Director. So you were here when that first came out.
Yes, yes. It actually was a study by a group, I believe, called Burns. And they were out of Fort Collins. And they did a marketing study and analysis and made several suggestions at that time. And one of them was to hire what they called a City Progress Director. Or they, I don't even know if they actually coined that term. It was my understanding, it was a mayor at the time, that said that that's the title that that role should take. So kind of very, I think, foresighted with that mayor. It was Mayor Gramm like, I believe, who made that suggestion. And so that was actually decided upon before I took the role. But I started, I believe, in, who, August, September, I believe, in 1990 is when I first came to the city.
And I worked with you from the Heritage Foundation, but you were the Progress Director.
Yes, yes. That was one of my roles was to be a liaison to many of the community partners at the time and enjoyed my time immensely working with the various facets, including the Heritage Foundation.
It's nice to be able to talk to you about past things and the progress, so it comes full circle.
Yeah, full circle. Yes, absolutely. I can answer any questions while I'm here too. Any of you have any questions?
None for me?
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Sandy.
Thanks, Steve. He's did the hiring.
And then I just wanted to report on a few things here. The Tweymore Trails Project is really coming along quite well. You might have seen, if you're paying attention at all, the Facebook, a few Facebook posts of some new signage that we've installed out there. These are interpretive signs or signs that just delineate and depict things that are in the area. Wildlife, birds, there's one on the floods. And these were designed by my administrative assistant, Dana Jorgensen, if you've not had the chance to meet Dana. But I invite you to go out to Tweymore and take a look at the signs. They are just spectacular. And just really proud of Dana and her work and Ty getting those installed. And they're just neat to see as you're walking the trails and you can stop and just take a look at that and read about the wildlife and various things. And then they've installed some petway stations out there, so hopefully that helps some of that issue. The shelter is up out there. We're expecting the bathroom anytime soon. Paving of the entrance and being able to drive into the parking lot is not far behind. And we really hope to have that project wrapped up before June 1. So good project for us. If you haven't been out there, invite you to go out just north of the Rainbow Bridge. And just a nice trail to walk back in there. There's a cool bald eagle that lives back there that you can see from time to time and some other great wildlife to see, so. And then a couple of things, the traffic light at Sherman and Railroad is having issues. We lost a part out of that, some controller mechanism. And so it's a piece that allows us to interconnect with the railroad signal. Well, it's working, but it's not interconnected. So you might get some calls about how the traffic signal's a little wonky over there. We're working on it. We got the part ordered and hopefully we'll get it back up and working soon. For most of the day today, I think it was flashing red, so people were having to treat that intersection as a four-way stop, which came as quite difficult to some. But it is working now, but just be aware that it's not interconnected with the rail signal. And spring cleanup, we're deep into that. We're a couple of weeks into spring cleanup. It's going well, but the crew's finding a lot of stuff to pick up out there, as you all know. Hopefully, we're on target to hit the end of that in a couple of weeks. And then, of course, we have the dumpsters to replace as well, lids to fix. So still a lot of work to do there. You might have noticed that they come through an area and maybe they leave some things and then they come back. That's, you know, in part because the county has asked us to bring things out in groups. Like we want all the mattresses and then we want all the tires and then we want all the appliances. So they're having to pick things up in, you know, rounds, if you will. So you might see them through a neighborhood two or three times before they get everything, but be assured that they will pick everything up and get it out there, so. And then finally, I just wanted to have a conversation briefly about the recent letter from the county commissioners. You might be aware that the governor has suspended the COVID dial. This was the color dial that said, okay, businesses have to operate 25% or whatever. That was suspended last Friday. And that basically left it up to each of the counties and/or the health departments in those jurisdictions to decide what to do. So the Northeast Colorado Health Department did not make any declarations, so the county commissioners, Morgan County Commissioners, did. And basically lifted all restrictions. Businesses are open for business without restriction. Masks are encouraged but not required indoors or outdoors. Except in state buildings, because that is still a requirement of state and federal buildings. So the question from me tonight is, our staff is asking, what should we do as the city? And we have several facilities that are still under a bit of capacity restriction, mask restriction. You all saw when we were at the court tonight, they're under restriction. And Jason is wondering, what can I do? Can I open the court up? So I ask you to consider what we might do as a city and what we do with city facilities. So I'm happy to take conversation on that. I know you can't necessarily make a declaration or a decision tonight, but if you could give at least some conversation about that or opinion on that, we'd sure appreciate that.
Me personally, I'm opening it up, follow what the commissioners have done. You can wear them, not mandatory, and that's my perspective of it. It may not be the same as everybody else's, but that's fine. That's kind of the way I would follow.
Second?
Third?
Yep, I agree.
I'd go along with that too. I think that, number one, we found out that surfaces aren't supposed to transmit the virus. Secondly, all high-risk people should have been vaccinated now or had the opportunity to get vaccinated. So I would agree and concur that, I think that, you know, if people are concerned, they can still do the precautions of voluntarily wearing masks and everything and doing their own social distancing and everything. But I don't think the city should impose any of the restrictions now.
I have a question about when can, or maybe they already have, the Meet and Eat program over at the Senior Center.
Well, that's part of our facility, if you will, so that, this helps answer that question tonight, right? If we open the facilities up without restriction, then the Meet and Eat folks would be allowed to meet without restriction and eat without restriction.
They're ready.
Yeah, I figured they probably were, yep.
We don't have that large of groups like some cities would. So I think we're safe and responsible in doing that.
If there's nothing else on that, I don't have anything else to report. I'd be happy to answer any questions or clarify anything that you might have on your mind, but thank you.
Do you have your direction or?
I do.
Thanks, Lauren, for having us all over there. It was great.
It was my pleasure. Thank you all for coming. I enjoyed it. I think you probably heard enough from me, so I'll shut up.
Hey, Lauren, would you let Bill know that I've had a couple of people call me and tell me that they really appreciate the cops on West Street slowing things down? So it's been Bill. So kudos.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Anybody else have anything for its meetings or announcements? The meetings and announcements?
The city's accepting sealed bids for the purchase of 500 KVA pad-mounted transformers until 3:00 PM on April 21st, outdoor holiday decorations until 3:00 PM on April 23rd, Quail Dunes Golf Course Pump Station Replacement Project until 3:00 PM on May 7th, and an automated weather observation system, AWAS, until 3:00 PM on May 11th. Under meetings, the Heritage Foundation is scheduled to meet the 22nd at 4:00 PM in the community room. Planning Commission will hold a virtual meeting on the 26th at 4:30 PM. And the next regular city council meeting will be May 4th at 6:00 PM here, and that will be another one preceded by a tour.
Seeing nothing else coming before this council, this meeting's adjourned.